Big Ben, we'll begin the meeting with the pleasure of the motion.
Recording in progress.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good when you got a group of guys standing behind you, much louder. All right, we'll begin the meeting with the clerk's report.
You should have January 18 minutes in front of you for signature.
I make a motion, do we accept them as printed?
Second motion, moved and seconded, any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, to vote. The treasurer's report, Pam.
Yeah, thank you. For the warrants and payments today, I wanted to report the county warrant, the UT warrant, the TIP warrant, two payroll warrants, and the electronic funds transfers. There were actually three altogether for main state retirement system and the empowerment, which is the 457 account. And the reconciliations for the checking accounts are done for the TIP and the unorganized territory. And I also want to report, as part of my treasurer's report, that the quarterly reports for the fourth quarter of 2021 are done, and those go to the IRS, the main revenue services, and the Department of Labor. And also Vicki, and Vicki Brayley and I are working on the draft audit, which was recently emailed us last week by our auditing firm. So Vicki and I go over that with a fine-tooth comb to make sure everything is correct, or if it needs corrections, they get corrections. And I also wanted Diane Dunham, the finance manager, to just enumerate which of the tax documents that have been sent out to employees and other entities, if you don't mind, Diane.
We've sent out all the W2s, the W3s, and...
1099, yeah?
I'm sorry?
1099.
And all the 1099s, so each of the required tax documents have been sent out.
Good thing.
And that's it for the treasurer's report?
No motion on that.
I make a motion, we accept the treasurer's report as reported.
Second motion, moved and seconded, we accept the treasurer's report, any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, number three, Sheriff's Department opening up a bid for a hybrid vehicle. Is that really only one bid here, or is the other one a bid for the vehicles as well?
No, there is only one.
It's only one.
There's only one bid, but this other one is for another matter?
No.
It's from Tenwick Construction. No plow bid?
The bank, you know.
Well, we'll just open the one bid then, I think that makes everybody's job easier. I don't think we need...
Who wanted that from?
Quark.
Works.
Quark Motors, and Augusta.
Yep.
The page we need, which is typically the first one. It gives all kinds of things, I think it's, we need a motion to the Sheriff's Department?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion that we turn this over to the sheriff and lieutenant, is it lieutenant?
Lieutenant.
To go over the sheets, make sure that they're proper for the bid.
Can you read the amount of the bid, though?
What's that?
Could you read the amount of the bid?
Well?
155,000.
Yeah, 155.
155,000, 769.
155,769. I think he's broken it down here with one through five, and the numbers in the whole... I'm not gonna make comments about those. All of you guys look at it, you decide whether the number is right. He's even telling you the gross vehicle weight, how much it weighs. You got more information than I want. You're gonna look at it now, make a decision if you want. The police were not doing that. Number four, Mike Pond isn't here, but I wanted him here because they found a problem at the sheriff's office in the drain system. Normally just fix. So, yeah, there's a problem with grease balls out of the kitchen, and that's the one we wanted. We're gonna spend money with Mainland to have them check it out for, to see if the drainage system was sufficient. I think we're wasting our time and money because the grease traps were full, and that just means we know that the grease is in the field. So I think what we ought to do is hold off on the APRA funds, find out how deep we are in what's gonna happen, so that we can throw the funds. And not that I'm not interested in going over the funds and talking about them, but I'm just saying, I'm not gonna vote personally on whether to spend monies at this time until we find out.
Vicki, that's the floor stopped when I was up there this summer?
I'm sorry, I was...
Okay, we're dealing with the grease in the kitchen drains there at the jail?
Yeah.
So those are the floor ones that you showed me when I was up there?
Yes.
It's quite a job, if I remember correctly.
It is.
Right?
Yeah.
What are our other options?
There we are.
We're talking about your topic right now.
Grease, grease and drain.
You listen.
Okay, so, I went to the jail to explore what the admin's out there and what's going on. And one of the things we've been talking about with Mainland was the septic tanks, new pump station, possibly drain field. They were under the same assumption I was, there was a grease trap outside. After learning that there's grease traps in the kitchen, which was designed 40 years ago, under today's standards, they don't meet any standards. And since the problems that they have up there, after talking to the gentleman that was in charge, and talking to Mainland, they're under the same theory that I am, that there needs to be two grease traps outside on the sheriff's department side of buildings, and then we would pick it up, there'd be a thousand gallon grease trap, come out of that, go into a 2,000 gallon tank, come out of that and into a lift station that would pump it back around to the second new tank over on the other side of the building. I didn't know they had one, they have a hog in there, they call it a hog.
Yeah.
And it grinds up all of the stuff that there is, and it shoots it down the lines. Talking to Berry Hill, where they have scoped that, the line that runs through there, goes the whole length of the building, takes a 90 degree, runs the rest of the length of the building, and then goes outside. The line where it turns on the elbow is deteriorating through the camera. So with all that being said, after talking to Mainland, seeing what there is, my advice is to the commissioners is that we do what Mainland was talking about, we set up two new tanks. It would require that we're gonna have to get a firm to go in there, that kitchen is gonna have to be shut down while they do it, they're gonna have to cut that floor, re-root that coming, so it's a direct line out and no more underneath the building and down through. And it's gonna be pretty expensive to do that, and after I watched what I saw in here a few weeks ago, you know, we were talking about the longevity of septic systems, the system is 40 years old, the drainage. It looks like it still gets some life left to it, but after talking to him about the grease traps, no grease traps, grease pumping over into the septic field, in my opinion, there's no sense in even probing it. I said we need to just go ahead and redesign, all new fields over there, take the whole guess out of this, because if you don't, if you get another 10 years out of that, then you're gonna have to raise the money in order to replace them this way here with the money that has been given to you, all of us. It makes more sense to put new fields in now and have another 40 years, because all of us will be gone by then, and to oversize the fields when they design us, to design another section onto it, so if you should add on to the jail, that it would accept any add-on, if you want to put another eight to 10 prisons in there, it would accept and handle that waste from that. That's my advice to the commissioners, take it for what it's worth.
The only thing I throw in there too is when they use the term grease trap, we don't fry anything in there in the kitchen at all, it's just basically from that hog, the grindup, ground up stuff that comes down through, that's really the only thing that those things use, that grease trap in the backside, further side in, in the kitchen, essentially is not used at all, it's just that one, I assume, right next to the door, so...
But under, and I know what you're saying, you're not frying anything, but it doesn't matter if you fry it or not, it's just a normal grease that's in food.
Yep.
And it's in the system, and what it does is it goes through the pump system without being separated.
Right.
Because it needs a chance to go in, cool down, and separate, and then go to the next one, separate again, and then it becomes a different product, and grease will just go inside the drain field and will make that matte.
Plug it up.
And it will be done, it's just the nature of the beast.
Yeah.
Grease doesn't evaporate.
That's why we hired you, Mike, for those opinions, so following that, that's why I want to hold on these people that want to spend money until we find out what I call so.
So can I make a recommendation?
Absolutely.
My recommendation is, since those people are here, that you hear their proposals and just not take action on them necessarily tonight.
That was my...
That was actually gonna be my recommendation, anyway that you think about those big proposals, but I will say, whatever Mike does, it does have to have some engineering done from some company.
Yeah.
They probably ought to go to bid this time, rather than just be...
Yeah, I agree.
Process-wise.
Well, that whole septic system replacement of all of those tanks and all that stuff will have to go up a bit because it's gonna be such a larger amount, you know?
So will the design.
Well, we've done it in three sections so that they're not gonna supersede the $10,000 limit, that's why we did it in a section already, we broke it apart, so that one, had me do that?
You mean the design?
Yep. Not mine.
Their cost.
Yeah.
Okay. How does this compare price-wise to the one we did last fall?
The drainage system?
I'd say by the time that project's done, it's gonna be in the $150,000 range. Times you do the pumps, that they're probably calling for, which in my world makes sense, you do twin alternating pumps, and they'll be on a slide rail system, so if one malfunction, you can take it up out of there without having to shut the system down, that type of stuff, you know, it's a new technology.
Okay. Any questions of Mike?
No.
Any more, Clyde?
No.
Thank you, Mike.
Sorry for not being here.
Yeah. Appreciate you coming in.
We have Craig, he did make it in, so we can go back to the DA at least, and it's next.
Sheriff, you have a comment, you wanna make a move to bid, or no?
All these, all these were up here, was the trade-in die, the five vehicles are gonna trade in more, and so, yeah, that price looks pretty close to what we were figuring on, the overall 157, 769.
Okay.
For the vehicles, so...
Yeah, they're within their range.
It's in that?
Actually a little cheaper, I think, than what we projected.
Yep.
Oh, you want to accept that?
Yeah. I remember that we accepted a bid for the five new vehicles to be paid out of the APRA funds.
You already accepted the up to amount from the APRA funds.
Yeah. So what was the up to amount?
It was up, including the communication part, which is...
Well, the equipment part goes along with it.
Which, that's not in that, no.
That's not in that bid, no.
And that's another almost $10,000 per vehicle.
Okay, so what was, what was that?
Well, you had up to 238,000.
Oh, yeah.
So you're well within your range, is what I'm saying.
We're just up to...
We're in that range that way.
So we've already accepted this?
Just over two, yes, okay.
But you do need to accept that.
An over, except that bid.
Did you make a motion in the bid?
Yes, he did.
Second motion.
Okay.
It's the only bid we have, is this one.
Yeah. Do we have any further discussion on the bid? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, so sit down, fine. Good, thank you. If I don't, who wants this? Somebody needs to keep that for the record.
Come in.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Jordan is here.
Oh, good. Sure.
Yes, I do.
Mr. Who?
Mr. Jordan's here.
Oh, good. Oh, he is here?
Yeah.
So back up and, Craig, come on in.
Yeah, I didn't know I was gonna make it, I appreciate the fact that my wife spoke already, so, but last year our meeting went till, like, 4:30, and, the same meeting went till 4:30 this year. And just so you know, if you're a fabricarian shop, you'll be getting 16% back this year on everything you spent that year.
I'm a member, so...
So every dollar you spent, you get 16 cents back.
Yeah, I know, I get told that by a politician.
I think Lance was, he's the one that asked.
Yeah, no, we were just talking, if I remember where we left it, it was just, you know, I mean, the year of my lease and...
Right.
I mean, we don't know what we're gonna do, but I'm at least interested in pursuing the potential of the building.
Yep.
But how long it's gonna take, when that can be looked at, whether we'll do it, I don't know. And so the thought was...
Lance, I can appreciate your position, honestly, I do understand, you know, if you got money available and... I understand, I'm quite a bit different than a lot of the landlords around in the fact that, I guess, I don't, the lease is a courtesy thing to both of us, actually, it kind of protects both of us. But, you know, on a different note, I'd be glad to work with you on a month-to-month basis with, like, say a one-year notification that you're gonna leave, which, you know, based on, you know, if you're all ready to go, I mean, just like you work with an architect and he gets all your drawings put together and stuff, and things like that, so it's all ready to go, then you'd be, you know, a year's time would not be unreasonable to be 100% complete by the time you get packing and everything so that the building could be occupied, and so I would just do on a month-to-month basis.
So would it be okay if we wrote something up, it was month-to-month, and we give you a year's?
Yeah, I think that works, you know, 'cause, 'cause you could be the, you know...
Well, I mean, this is gonna take, it's not gonna be happening.
It's not gonna happen tomorrow, but, you know...
And it may not happen at all, it's cost and all that, but it was just...
Gentlemen, we're all getting older in this room, we don't know when it's gonna... Yeah, how things are all gonna...
We can't hold it too long.
Yeah, but regardless...
That's very...
But what I'd like to do, you know, based on the way everything's going, obviously, you know, the money that we were getting, that I was getting for the space is 10-year-old money at this point. What I propose would be like a couple grand a month, and then on a month-to-month basis, and then a one-year notification of exit.
Good, so we need to draw out the contract, saving... Right, Tiffany?
We can use the same boilerplate that we previously had.
Just change the number.
Change the numbers in there, and, well, I have to change the term, that it goes, it's a month-to-month with a one-year exit.
Good, okay.
And I'll just do that and get that up to you, and you can...
Okay, thank you.
Perfect, I appreciate you seeing me based on the fact that potentially I might not have been here, so...
No problem.
Thank you, thanks very much.
Yeah.
Good, that's a good note. Okay, is that it?
And my turn now.
It's your turn.
All right, so we have some folks here that want to present their project, and the first one is Jim?
Yo.
Yo. He's mickeying the other room. So the first one is the laptop proposal, it should be first on your packet, in the red folder. And basically, that proposal is for eight laptops and associated whatever with them.
Get them set up so they can work from home.
Yep, so that they can work from home, or they can work from the jail, or they can work wherever they're going, so...
That's the 5,000, like, 5 eighths, is all?
It is.
Yeah.
We already kind of agreed to that, right?
But we didn't agree to eight, we agreed to five. Two, no? Two to three. No, it was eight before, it was eight. Yeah, it's the people that don't have it in this building. So there's a couple of them that do have one. Yeah, you and I, I think it was you and I that talked about a couple of them for, but never eight, I don't remember eight at all. So if we have eight, and everybody that works from home has to have the permission of the commissioners, how are we gonna handle that? What's the need of buying eight at a time now and not having given permission to eight people to work from home?
They might not all be used at once, but when somebody sets up their own computer, it has their software and their permissions on it? Like what Tiffany would have would be different than what Diane might need.
Or like Vicki, for instance. Vicki has one, but she has certain things that I wouldn't necessarily have her need, so...
I wouldn't, as a commissioner, I wouldn't support that everybody works from home, there's no bill be here.
No, no, I don't think that's what I'm saying, what I'm saying is...
No, that's not what we're thinking, no.
Let's say if you and I each have a computer, right? That my computer could be different than yours, but yet I might have to go remote one time and you a different time.
Or maybe...
We can't just hand my computer, I can't just hand this computer and go, here, take it, it's yours now, is that right?
That's correct.
But it's sort of like saying teachers, teachers would be a good example, they have their own machines because they have their own software, their own hardware, their own files on them.
Unless I'm... Well, I don't know why we'd need eight, though, I still don't, I'm stuck on that number. Because you have eight people that could potentially have to go remote.
That don't have laptops in this building.
Who are the eight people? Let's name them.
Huh?
Just name them, let's list them.
Heidi and Cheryl from Pro Bay.
Who's that?
Heidi and Cheryl.
Oh, Pro Bay.
Pro Bay, Sue and Marlene.
And a third one, yeah, potentially, we're gonna be hiring.
Yeah, but I don't know if I counted that one, I'm not sure if I did. Myself, Diane, what, six?
Vicki?
Vicki's got one already.
Okay, yeah. And what are we gonna do with...
Oh, Nick, Nick I think was on our list.
Julie had one that's coming back.
Right.
Right, for the...
We have three then, already.
We have, well, Tim has one, Amanda has one, and Vicki has one, and Julie has one, right? So we have four in the building that are already assigned.
I just don't...
So we need four?
I just don't understand.
No, I had, I just counted seven, but I'm missing somebody.
Wait, but if we already have four...
How about Sue, you got your own?
I have my own.
You have your own?
Right, but I'm not counting those in that seven that I just counted out.
Oh, so this eight isn't within that seven?
That's not counting the ones that I just named off, Tim and Amanda and...
So this eight is separate of the one you...
Separate, yes. And Terry, just so you know, it's not even just, it's not even specifically for working from home, like, there are instances where we might be upstairs for a meeting, you know, a public meeting, and it's large, and we can't all fit in this room, being able to have a laptop up there and have the functionality, so the budget meeting is...
That's why we have that remote room.
Yeah, but you can't get your information from your computer on this, like, you don't have...
Oh, yeah.
...your drives and stuff on this.
Oh, sure we could.
But like, if I was up at dispatch and doing something that, in that sense, if we were off-site or we were working, it would apply to that too, not just the work-from-home setting, is what I'm trying to say.
Bob?
What about the commissioners? Is there a need for any commissioners to have a laptop?
I don't know, I already got Karen's in home. No, I have a big hammer at home, but I don't have a hammer.
And his wife takes care of all of it.
And Cheryl takes care of the problem, so, no. I just think this society is moving faster than I want it to move, and I think we ought to slow down on most of this computer stuff, because it changes so fast.
I think that shit is sale. My only thing was, I remember a figure of roughly 5,000.
It is.
So, no, but I mean, early, we voted on something, what was it? You remember?
Oh, you didn't, I had given you that in just a report that that was something we never voted on.
Oh, you didn't vote on it?
We didn't vote on it, no, we just talked about it briefly.
Okay.
And for instance, if you, I'll just give you, for instance, if you guys get hit with COVID really bad here, payroll's not gonna happen, you're gonna have some really unhappy employees. That's the other thing, like, if you're...
But we closed, when COVID first came out and the CDC rules were flying around, we shut this facility down to the public, which means the people could come in, the workers, and do their work.
But if the workers have COVID... Right, but the workers have to isolate or they have to quarantine.
If you've had COVID, you don't want it to get...
You can't come in.
You wouldn't come in and work.
No, I understand that, but that wasn't the reason we shut it down. We kept the public out of here so that they wouldn't get COVID.
Yeah, but...
I just, I just don't see the need of eight more, that's, we've already got four, that's 12, I just think it's a waste.
Terry, I, this office does not need laptops at all, I don't know where that, that's, this is the first time I ever heard of us getting laptops. We certainly don't need laptops, so...
So this hasn't been discussed with the whole plan? Okay, all right, thank you, we're not gonna take any actions anyhow, so...
So the jail, the second thing in your packet is a proposal for engineering at the jail, Sheriff Kempson is here to talk about that. It is a proposal to really design the, something for addition that will deal with the medical and psychological needs of the jail.
Okay. Well, you know, obviously, we're talking in an old facility here, and today we're dealing with issues that were never anticipated 40 years ago when the jails first designed. We have a lot of, it's no secret that a lot of inmates are mentally ill, and we're having to take care of these people. We don't have the physical structure within the jail itself to do, to maintain proper psychological services within the facility, within the plant, we're having to use the library, and that's not secure, these people need to interview, or we have to do it sometimes in their pods, which again is not optimum in case they need to be interviewed, you know, secrecy and all that other stuff. So that, and the fact that our medical facility is half the size of this room right here...
That's a closet.
It's basically a closet, I mean, that might have been okay 40 years ago, but today with all the requirements that are piled on top of us, unfunded man, liabilities and everything else.
File.
Everything, we need to expand most of facilities, and so I've always been thinking, if we ever had the opportunity, the best place to expand on the current facility with a one-story expansion would be that part of the jail, as if you drive into the right, the far side there where we do arraignments, we give it punch out into the driveway and create a facility there, we could put half medical and half psychological services in that little wing.
Do they actually have the, I'm getting back to what we're talking about a little bit, is there any way that if we did put on, next to the dispatch center and had your offices, could you put a section there that would be needed, or is it...
No, the reason why I thought about putting it out there in the driveways, because, one, workers could go in there and actually create a wing without affecting the security of the jail itself.
Good.
Now, you could actually punch a hole in the wall and still not affect the interior.
My point is, if you put it in a new building, you wouldn't be affecting it either.
Well, you need to have it in the jail.
Okay, that's what I was getting...
Yeah, it has to be in the jail, yeah, yeah, it definitely has to be in the jail, there's just no way around that. So these, these two rooms, which are, they're not very large, if you think about the overall thing there, but we'd also, we have two cells in there for sick inmates, and also being proposed in there is the ability to house in there, so right now the air system within that facility goes all over the jail. So if you have a bunch of sick people in a pod, it can infect everybody.
You got it, man.
Right, so you need to have a sealed unit for this medical... Right, so you need to have a sealed unit for this medical side. And that's why I was considering if we ever had the opportunity to do this. And so, I reached out to A. Hodgson out of Waterville and asked if they would come up with a, an estimated cost, and I was asked to find that out. And they sent this proposal. They came over and they did a study, they, they grabbed our, our diagrams that were forty-something years old, we barely see them. And they worked with that and come up with the paperwork that you had.
And that really is a design proposal.
Yeah. And.
So regardless of when you actually do the proposal, you know, when all said and done, is a different story than designing it. Somewhere, you're gonna need to design, you know.
Yes.
Yeah. You don't just go out and start building.
No, no, this is just, I, I said, "Look, I need something, a realistic proposal." I was surprised at six hundred thousand. I was expecting more, like, you know, close to a million.
Oh, a little over?
Yeah, but the reality is, building any type of structure these days add another twenty-five cent, you know, percent to it. I was thinking it probably is gonna be closer to seven hundred and fifty thousand, but they put six hundred thousand as a guesstimate.
For fifteen hundred square feet?
Yeah. Well, whatever, whatever you got there.
Twelve fifty-two, fifteen hundred.
Yeah. So what they're showing there, they're showing it basically, the, the overall room, and then they're proposing two cells in the medical wing, as well as an examination room and a doctor's office. Then, on the other side, a, a large room where at least twelve people could sit, and a separate office for the psychological portion.
Is this enough to, uh, room to satisfy those people that keep giving us a report?
Yes, sir, they're happy.
So, this has been run by them?
Well, I, I, we, I've been talking to them off and on for the past couple of years about this, and this would be the best, I mean, 'cause right now, we're still, amen, relatively small, you know, twenty-seven person population. This would satisfy our needs. I don't foresee us throwing anymore, as long as things stay the way they are, we'll be all right.
If we had, um, more room, could we bring more prisoners in?
Yeah, we could, yeah.
Is there always, is, is there still always pretty much a need for that?
Yep. We have a board and Penobscot prisoners still when they, when they bring them in, yeah.
What should we get per prisoner?
Well, right now, we're, we're only charging fifty dollars a day. But, you know, if, if we ever did something like that, we could expand, but then again.
What's the going rate?
Well, they just recently come out with standards, and I think it's up around a hundred and twenty dollars per day per prisoner. But, that was, that hasn't been agreed upon yet, and I think right now, like Somerset is charging, gosh, I, I, I can't, they're charging more than I am. I charge Penobscot fifty bucks a day just to tell the salary for them because they were getting hammered by the state, so.
That's cheaper than a motel.
What, I'm sorry?
That's cheaper than a motel.
It is.
Much cheaper, too.
Yeah. Right now, I mean, it's been really up and down. We started off with nine to ten a day, and it's kind of fluctuating. Right now, I think we've got four or five in there right now. I think it goes up and down, depending on what you're working and everything else, so.
Okay. Any questions?
Clyde?
Fifty dollars, I think too cheap.
Yeah. Sounds like a good deal.
'Cause you stop and figure how many, how much a meal costs here.
Well, you know, it's, it's marginal cost, um, it's actually been very helpful to us. If it wasn't for that money, we've, we've raised over the past years, so we've been doing this, we'd never have been able to pay for that chiller that we put on last summer. You know, so that, those monies there were fundamental to helping us with maintenance and other things that we just can't afford to deal with. So, you know, right now, it, you know, it is what it is, but, you know, down the road, maybe that could be renegotiated. I mean, it's just mostly a handshake to myself and the sheriff.
If we, if we, if we do that, I mean, do we have reciprocity with them at the, with Penobscot? I mean, in other words, if we had a problem, would they take it for fifty-two?
They can't even, they can't even, uh, keep their own prisoners, so that happens, it's a hard problem. We have a good working relationship with Somerset.
Yeah.
We always, Somerset sometimes will have prisoners that will create a, a conflict, one way or another, and they'll ask us to babysit them, and vice versa. For us, we have a prisoner that creates a conflict here, we'll give it to them, and we'll charge each other.
Okay.
Because it's basically, you know, whether you have one prisoner in there or thirty, it's the same cost for, you know, except for food, it's the same cost, so.
Okay. I'm gonna try.
All right, I gotta get the monument, please, I was out here.
So, we're just gonna hold them until we find out about the jail? Before we commit? I'm okay to do the, I'm okay to do the study? If you're gonna make a motion to do that?
Yeah.
That's the thirteen thousand?
Yes.
That's the fifteen. Twelve fifty to fifteen.
Yeah, okay, I thought it was. Anyway, the difference between the design.
Okay.
It's got a broken.
So your next thing in your pack, the packet should be the information on the monuments, the triangles of World War Two, World War One.
Flower ladies.
Monuments.
We ain't gonna make that move, too.
Uh, you can if you wish, but.
Well, we, we can relieve these guys. They don't have to pay.
I did have one more question, Scott. Is there a way that if you, if we did this, right, the six hundred thousand?
He's, he's talking to the jail.
Is there a way that you could put your offices from where you are now, like, maybe make it a little bigger?
Like, reattach us back to the sheriff's office like it was back thirty years ago?
Yeah, well, I mean, 'cause we're, we're thinking about doing something with your building.
Yeah.
And, you know, I'm assuming that, maybe this is wrong, but if you add that to it, it's a lot cheaper than something stand alone, right? I don't know, but.
It doesn't have to be as secure, but.
We can't stand alone.
Well, he already does stand alone.
No, but we can add to buildings, we can't build new buildings.
Right, yeah.
Okay, well, yeah, okay, but then, you're right, so, whether we add to Dispatch or to this one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it'd be, it'd be another brick structure, of course, and secure and all that sort of thing. Wouldn't we be able to, I mean, sure, but.
So, if we okay the study, can you just ask him, he gave you like a rough six hundred, right?
For that small person going out, yeah.
Could you ask him roughly what that would be to what you'd need?
I think it would be substantially more than that, though. It would, you're talking probably another, I would guess, fifteen square feet. Yeah, I'm, you know, cost-wise, I'm.
What's the size of your building now?
Yeah, but does it have to be, I mean, this one has to be a bit more secure, right?
If we're gonna attach it to the jail, we have to have very secure.
Right.
And then it would be limited access, nobody else could come in there. I mean, not the DA's office, not the EMA or anything.
No, I got that. It's just like, where are you gonna put which one?
Yeah, and, and, and the thing about that, where would you put it? I mean, would you, you couldn't really continue out beyond what I'm talking about right now, because that's the leach field out there.
Okay.
And, because right now, we'd be taking up half the driveway. It would take up probably most of the driveway if we had something like that built in, just another flat, square structure. I, I really haven't thought about, to be honest with you.
All right, anyways, just a thought. Sounds to me like we ought to wait on the septic systems, all designed.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's the first dragon we figure out, slay, yeah.
So, okay, thanks.
Anyway, I appreciate the thought, though.
Yes. So, we're gonna go, you know, pass on it.
We're gonna pass on this, and now?
Yeah, yeah. We're just, and we'll take it up in a couple of weeks, so that.
We're gonna get that septic thing, if you understand the first.
Correct. I think we need to do that. The flower lady is next, right, Sue?
Mount Blue Garden Club, yes. So, these are, you have a thick, oh, well, it's okay. You have a thick packet in front of you that has all kinds of great information in it.
Yes, got a lot about.
They've done a lot of homework on their project proposal, write down to lots of quotes from the various vendors that they might need, and I think you have them all in there. They have committee members that have committed to helping with design and all of the, the work that needs to happen, and so, they are requesting forty thousand dollars. And I'll remind the commissioners, you guys do own that facility. It is a county, the land.
And the monument.
Well, and what's on it, obviously, is permanent, so.
Yeah. Yeah. All right.
You have questions with these ladies?
So, the only question I've had all along is, I keep receiving letters, the county receives letters, from people that are supporting this project, but nobody sends money.
Not yet.
I, I understand that, it's an important, it's county's responsibility, and, and like, we've been shirking our duties for a long time, I think, so. So, I, I fully support, and have said all along, cleaning that monument, because I think it needs to be done. So, but the rest of it, I, I, I don't understand. If I had a piece of land that the soil was poor, I think I'd have a soil site evaluator, which we sponsor right here in Farmington, Water and Soil. Have them check it out and see what we need for additives, rather than, it sounds to me like it's, I've never heard of anybody removing their lawn and replacing it with new soil because they didn't like their previous dirt. I mean, like, why wouldn't you augment the dirt?
I don't know that they would specifically remove all the soil. I think that it would amend and then reseed.
Okay, because I thought, the way I read it, that they were gonna remove and replace.
So, the project has multiple facets to it?
Oh, yeah.
And maybe it'd be good if the ladies talked about the various facets that they're talking about?
Sure.
Say again?
The various components that you're talking about. So, cleaning the monument was one of them. Parking was one of them. You wanna go with the trees and all that stuff?
Right.
Go ahead.
I'm not sure what else to add, we've brought it a few times, but, you know, with like the honor roll of the people that had lost their lives for World War One, is that a flagpole with the light? The site is on the National Register of Historic Places, and the granite curbing and crushed granite pathways are part of what the National Register of Historic Places thinks is significant at that site, and it's kind of disappeared. The parking spaces would allow better handicap access, if that were the thing. The site's used mostly, I would say, by American Legion for ceremonial, uh, ceremonial purposes, and, you know, they often comes with, come with a lot of flags and equipment to carry that have a nice staging place. The.
The impact of the project would contribute to.
And the impact of this project would contribute to tourism traffic, hopefully bring commercial to small businesses, restaurants in town, and, um, the, the whole site, when it was, um, left to the inhabitants of Franklin County, the vision was that this would be like a gateway to Franklin County, a beautiful site that as you pass through Farmington, going to the great sports adventures in Northern Maine, that, that that site would be visual and, and, um, I think that it deserves to be upgraded, it's really deteriorated.
Good. Steve Bunker. Steve Bunker's here, and he's, he's instrumental in a lot of things in Farmington, so I'd like to have his thoughts on it.
Great.
The American Legion post, which I'm the deputy commander of, has had, this is one of their roles for a number of years, we're pending a meeting with the garden club to bring this proposal also to us for our consideration, and perhaps collaborating in, in one way or, or, or another. Running on its own track, the town of Farmington and the Legion across the other side of the parking lot here has a major challenge on replacing its World War Two fallen persons. That is, that is in dire need over the years also. So, I'm, one of the reasons I came today was to be anxious to listen early on to their proposal here, so that we can bring that back to our, our Legion and see what we can do to help and, and support it. It is, it is long overdue and, and needs some, needs some tender care in some fashion, so I'm glad that the county will consider it on your side, as the town will consider it on, on the Meeting House Park side.
Hand that to Steve, put, give him a part of the request.
No, thank you.
That's good, I'm glad to hear that, that, so that more entities would enter, and it's just, I know it's about Franklin County, and we're responsible for Franklin County, but it's in the town of Farmington. And I don't wanna have an impact on the traffic, because you keep talking about drawing cars. When we were there for Veterans Day, I didn't see an issue at all.
Well, 'cause usually on the day off, you've got that across the road that you park a lot of people.
Yeah, we were taking up space there. I didn't park there, but.
We were taking up some private spaces, the residents on one side and the business parking on the other side.
But, I mean, that's usually only crowded, if one will say, a couple days a year.
Yes, it's on two particular occasions.
Memorial Day and, and before.
Can I, can I interject one thing? The, the other thing that the ladies talked to me a lot about, which, which certainly, I think, is a huge issue in this day and age, is the handicap accessibility of a parking spot so that folks could actually get to the monument if, in fact, they were, needed a handicap.
Are you talking about driving onto the lawn area and the?
Uh, we're looking at putting parking spaces in the back right-hand corner of the lot.
Where the trees are?
Where the trees hopefully will come out. And because they're trees with a, a property that doesn't allow growth of other things in, where they're grown, that a paved spot there would protect a place that the grass isn't gonna grow.
And occasionally, some of our veterans are handicapped, limited, so a wheelchair accessibility, at, at least one parking spot that's at the same level for access would be a real plus.
Okay. All right. Questions?
Why, of course.
Huh? No? Okay, but I do still support cleaning the monument. I think, I think that's necessary, and the county has, we have two thousand, is it, on the books?
Yes.
And I'm willing to give that to you to clean the monument. The two thousand dollars, right now.
And that's not, that's not our money, that's other money.
That's correct.
Can we mix those?
Yeah, this particular project, you can blend those. It's not like you're doing it in, in, it's not seed money for another grant.
So, if we were to enter into the lake, I don't know, let's say, I'm just hypothetically, let's say the county farmer's been pitching some, and the Legion's been pitching some, and then we got this fund, and then maybe some other money, that's kinda.
It can. It's a partnership grant, and they like that collaboration, actually.
Yeah, that, that's why I was, I'm glad that Steve gained to interject, to add some more information for you people to contact them, or vice versa, or get something started.
You can, what, I don't know, you could maybe also have their parking, or you could like, you know, somebody donate some stuff, they could have children rock up there, or.
I'm hoping that once we get going with this, there will be enough publicity, you know, around the area that people will call in, because all the letters I've got support this idea. I've only received one letter not supporting this. I've seen, I've received many comments about not doing everything you talk about, and I understand that.
We, we all understand we need to do something, it's just never what.
Yeah, right.
And I wanna consider, too, that the site's been there for ninety-eight years, and it's only been one time, fifty-three years ago, when the garden club took over, that it was a major rehaul and, and upgrade, and in fifty-year, fifty-three years' time, it really needs improvements.
There are some of us that probably remember that fifty-three years ago.
Yeah, that's, no, I'm not that old.
Yes, you are.
My kid, they're.
Soon, soon, it, it doesn't agree with you.
I'm older than that.
Yeah. Okay, all right. Nobody else has chimed in on supporting the two thousand dollars that we have.
Well, I think we can, I, I would like to kind of wait till we see what I do. Aside, I don't think they're gonna want to clean that in February.
Yeah, I'm, I'm having trouble hearing.
Yeah.
I use liposols to hear, so I'm really at a loss these days.
I think we have plenty of time before spring.
If, there's some plant materials that should be ordered now, or we won't get them next summer. And, you know, we really can't move forward. And, you know, we really can't move forward in the direction of, you know, what do we want to do there? A $2,000 offering is kind and appreciated, but for what we need to do, it's a little start.
Steve?
Well, I think it's your money anyhow. When is, so when is your next selectmen's meeting?
We meet second and fourth Tuesdays.
So that'd be next week, right? And then when's the next Legion meeting?
We haven't abbreviated one this evening, but because of COVID, we have shrunk our agenda down. So that's the first Tuesday of each month.
Is there any way you could, at both the selectmen's meeting and there, kind of broach the idea and see if you could get a number, maybe?
Certainly.
It would be helpful. I mean, there's no, you know, not positive.
No, I'm happy. In fact, we've extended an invite to the Garden Club to come to our next Legion meeting, but COVID has closed the process, the shrink hours down. So it'll probably be, you know, the March meeting that we can actually entertain them. But I can get to my board certainly earlier than that to bring this to their attention and see if there's something collaborative we can do. And the Legion is certainly always open to worthy projects and can help with fundraising and promotions and things of that nature. We don't have much of a bank balance to be a real with the contributor to those, but certainly, we want, we've got a vested interest to want to do that in some degree.
And Terry, these ladies weren't in the room when they, so they don't know that you guys are hearing the things tonight, but not necessarily acting on them.
Because we have an issue at the general...
We want to get some numbers up there before we run.
Fair enough.
I would think that once we committed ourselves to doing what we want to do with them and give to them, I would think these other businesses or organizations are going to filter in. And I really believe that, because the American Legion is already thinking about it. But they want, they want the county to start first. Once we start and do something, then I think you're going to find more filter in. This is what I'm hoping, okay? And as far as the $40,000 goes, I think that's yours already.
You think what?
That's yours already, as far as I'm concerned, as a commissioner, okay?
Is that a motion?
Yeah, but it wouldn't have a second right now.
No, they will. These other two won't second that motion. But I made it, but...
No, no, not because you made it.
But it's there. It's there. And I don't want you to feel that it's not there, okay?
Thank you.
I support that $40,000 for that whole project you're doing up there. But I'm only one.
I understand.
Okay? And I have to fight with two others.
Can I help?
So that's the way I feel. And I think it would be a great project to take on for the county, to invest in that monument.
One other thing I forgot to mention that's in the proposal, it's intent to use all Franklin County vendors for work.
That's good.
So, you're kind of implying, maybe I'm reading this wrong, if we were going to take some action, and Clyde kind of mentioned it, right? That you think at that point, you would start to see other people want to weigh in, right?
Other people that...
Other groups or whatever. Is that something you kind of...
I have a commitment for a small group of people that would be willing to form a committee to decide what to do and how to do it. We've asked in the proposal for a project manager, which is basically someone that we need to know how to...
What you're talking about there is kind of like volunteer and give you work. Do you have any fundraising?
We haven't done any fundraising at all. We wanted to know where we stood here first, to know what might need to be after the fact. I mean, we don't think that the amount either is out of line for a project of that...
No.
Level.
But the longer you wait...
We'd really like to see it move forward.
The more it couldn't get out of line, no. It'll never be dirty, no.
Okay, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Elise.
I just have one question. Do we have to come back again?
No, I don't think you have to come back.
No. I think we kind of know when we got here.
They wanted to hear all the presentations tonight, and then I think at the next meeting or maybe the one after that, I don't know, I'm unsure on that, they will deal with the various proposals.
We're probably going to get that deal soon. Get that number.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
See you, ma'am. I think we got a lot.
How many you got left?
How many, how much money do you have?
You got money.
I got, I have time on.
I didn't bring it up. I've got it all on the spreadsheet. All right, Elise, come on in.
Hi.
This is Elise Johansson.
Hi, nice to meet you.
From Safe Voices, and she has put in a proposal. Elise, I'm going to let you explain that proposal to the commissioners. They have a copy.
Okay. Have you all been able to read it? Was there anything that you...
75,000, what?
Yes.
That number...
More or less.
More or less, huh? I'm glad you put the word "less" in there.
Oh, yeah, no. So, before I go in, is there anything that you want me to highlight or that you have questions right out of the gate?
I haven't run out of gate. This is at least the one time I have.
Absolutely. Yep, yep, yep. We have been wanting to do this on that property for over 10 years. This has been, it's happening. We're really excited about it. And when this opportunity came up, there were some wish list items or not. They weren't even the wish list items. They were items that need to happen on this project. But because of the very large inflation rate that happened at the beginning of funding this project and during COVID on construction materials, we've had to cut some pretty large items. In particular, some of the heating and cooling systems and the filtration systems, and then also the security system. And so those are the pieces that we think that this, our money would be able to support, if at all possible. We are getting a pretty significant amount of money through Main Housing, which is coming through HUD, through the Emergency Shelter Program funds, specifically for COVID. The two apartments at the front of the building are going to have vouchers attached to them for at least four years, which means people in Franklin County will be able to have apartments that they can... So survivors of domestic violence will be able to move into those apartments with a voucher. And then when they leave and find another place within the community, they take that voucher with them. And then the next person that moves into that apartment then gets another voucher. So it will be this revolving resource and opportunity for Franklin County.
So they take that voucher with them, right?
Correct. Yep. And they can move anywhere with that.
So they get to use the voucher somewhere else?
Correct. And then the new person...
Does it have to be voucher-specific where you're going?
If they want to use a voucher, the place that they're moving has to accept a voucher. Yep, yep.
How many places like that out there around here?
A lot in Maine, a lot. And they're all over the country. But there's different types of vouchers as well.
How long is someone, and maybe you don't have a typical, but if someone is in a situation that they have to get out of, and that they go do this, right? How long is the typical stay? Is there kind of an average or something like that?
In the emergency housing part or in the apartment?
Well, even the long term, how long do they, before some people get back on their feet and you're like, oh, thing?
I think there's a lot of factors. The job market, their own health, their own...
But is that like an average? I guess that's just one aspect.
No, because I think, you know, if someone has a disability because of an assault, or they have school-aged children and they're not able to go to work yet, or something like that. But it could take years. I think we've seen some survivors, you know, as soon as they get their own apartment, they have a job, they're able to really quickly reach self-sufficiency. And then other people, it takes a little bit longer because the abuser might have ruined their credit, might have not allowed them to get a job or go to school. So, could take a couple years. But these apartments, and we run multiple apartments like this, and people end up having really wonderful lives, feeling self-sufficient and safe, have a place that they can lock their door at night.
So this addresses the homeless problem?
It will for people that are fleeing domestic violence and are experiencing homelessness because of that, or at risk of homelessness because of domestic violence or human sex trafficking.
So is, is, how many apartments are you going to have? I don't remember.
So is it, the way that the property is set up on, it kind of looks like a dumbbell. So there's this large part of the front towards the main road, and there's the middle part of the dumbbell, and then there's another part over here. So this part over here, further away from the road, is going to be a resource center. And so our advocates will be working out of there. There will be food pantry space and survivor stations so people can come and do things on the internet, such as maybe apply for a job, all of those things. Then the middle part is going to be, it will have up to four bedrooms. So anywhere from 48 people who will be, who are fleeing domestic violence or human sex trafficking, will be able to stay there.
So are there some sharing rooms as well?
Nope, they have their own room.
So there's eight beds?
Nope, there can be up to eight beds, yes.
So there's four, eight places for beds?
Nope, there's four bedrooms. And so if a mom or a dad moves in with a kid, we would put two people in that bedroom. But if there's four individual adults, we don't...
So, okay, so somewhere between four and eight.
Correct. And the reason why we're doing it that way is because of COVID specifically. We realized that sharing rooms is not the safest option for people that...
Now, do you guys get reimbursed on the amount of people that are there through this voucher thing at all?
The vouchers pay for the rent of those two properties at the front. But they still have to pay the rent.
Okay, so who's...
They have to pay a percentage of their income outside.
So they pay a percentage of their income? Who covers the rest?
That gets covered by this voucher program. And then, so through Main Housing.
So what I'm saying is, if you have vacant spots, right?
Correct.
Nobody's getting in.
Wait, if we have vacant spots, no one's getting in them?
No, no, it's getting, so my thought was a little, I'm just running through in my head, like, we have this homeless issue, and these only specifically deal with domestic violence, right? If you guys had a couple rooms there, could you allow someone homeless temporarily to stay there?
Not if they weren't fleeing domestic abuse or violence. And the reason why is that, the reason why survivors that are fleeing, and I don't know if the sheriff can speak to this. We have a detective, no, Lieutenant Dick St. Laurent is on our board. And so he can also speak to what's happening in Franklin County, is survivors that are living in Franklin County that need to flee are not necessarily fleeing because there is no location in this county.
No, no, I got that.
And I guarantee, I don't see there being beds available.
Okay, so if the sheriff goes down here in the bridge in Farmington and finds a homeless person that's freezing to death, what are you going to do with it? Throw him out? You're not going to take him? You can't.
Hey, you can't really mix them with families, though. A lot of times, those people you're talking about are mental health issues. And it's just that...
So what do we do with them?
I think that there's got to be, I personally think that there is a lot of opportunity in our communities to have more resources, more homeless shelters, more safe housing for all people.
Well, you mentioned abuse, so all the sheriff's got to do is punch one in and take it in.
I said domestic violence.
Just to put an exclamation point, what she's saying, the biggest contributor to our jail right now is domestic violence. And people who recommit violation conditions of release. And so it is a huge problem for families.
What is the recidivism?
It's high, I mean, it's really high. I mean, it would be anecdotal to give you, but I can just tell you that it's, we see the same faces all the time.
We also run a program at Safe Voices for the perpetrators of the violence. And so that is something that we're really committed to. We've been working with the Department of Corrections for a very long time on this project. And it's an evidence-based model that the perpetrators who usually go through your sheriff's department or local law person, they go, they become convicted, they go and serve a sentence. And part of that sentencing is that they have to come through the program that we run, that's a 48-week program. And so we really are hopefully doing the prevention, you know, advocacy intervention, whole continuum of support care on this issue.
So are they meeting like weekly or bi-weekly?
They are, yep.
How often do they meet?
They meet every single week for 48 weeks.
So I mean, every day or just once a week?
Oh, sorry, once a week, for an hour and a half. And they have to pay to attend. It's the only program that we have that has any costs associated with it.
So, and they have to pay?
They have to pay.
Whatever does it do?
They do not get credit for the class.
Oh, so, oh, so they just have to...
Have you been to the select board in Farmington?
We are going to very soon with our friend over there, Steve Bunker. But I will say that we have gone to different municipalities throughout our history and said, you know, is there a way that you can support some of our just general advocacy work throughout the year? But we haven't done that with the county commissioners. I don't, not as long as I've been at Safe Voices.
But when I first came on, we always had an issue with going to the towns and the county at the same time. And if you went to one or the other, that was how it was handled. Now, your request here is you're going to go with both.
We do, and we need to for this project, yeah. So I will say, we are an essential business. When COVID happened, we did not shut down our employees from that moment, and we haven't reduced our staffing at all. We've actually increased our staffing since COVID. The numbers of served have not only gone up, but the need of what people are asking for and what they're experiencing, similarly to what you mentioned. You know, we might be working with a survivor where previously, they came to us for advocacy, and then they went to another nonprofit for case management, someone else who could help them with some other need that they had. And what we're hearing from survivors is that there's wait lists in so many places. And so our advocates are working with them on all of the things. But all of the things are being affected or exacerbated or caused by that domestic violence.
So do you, the sheriff, what, he sees the same faces all the time? Are you seeing the same faces?
So nationally...
Because I see, there must be a connection here somehow. Because I read in papers about domestic violence all the time. So, and you're, you're trying to prevent and not prevent it, but to help them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nobody, nobody's trying to help the homeless people, so we just forget those people, let them free.
Um, I think you're gonna get a proposal for something along that line that may be in the near future.
I will say that, um, domestic violence is the number one cause of homelessness in women, number one. So when you talk about the homeless, for sure, it is the number one cause for women.
Is this still, um, do they still, for a while, they were taking homeless people down in the basement of the, of the church?
No, no, that, that, no more.
Yep. The other reason that we can't have, you know, general population, people come into our locations is because abusers are very creative. And even if they can't get into the building, they, and you know how vain it is, everybody knows everybody. And what they could do is connect with someone where they say like, oh, I know that she's there. I'm gonna get my friend Jo to come into there and, and harm her or stop her or tell me different things about what's happening with her. And that's why our shelters are really, um, highly confidential locations.
I understand that, but that wasn't what I was talking about. I was talking about the guy to find under the bridge. Has nothing to do with anybody that you have.
Right.
And it's just that, you know.
We wind up taking them to FMH.
Yeah.
Um.
Hey, you used to, you used to. For mental health issues.
We used to take them to Augusta, but they don't do that anymore, huh?
No.
Well, why don't they put them on?
Steve Bunker. He almost committed me one day.
He was running a ministry there for a while. Um, yeah. Uh, Steve Bunker. With the, um, oh, boy. Do you have a question?
Uh, a comment. And I don't mean to intrude with the town who's involved in your, in your statement, so I gotta chime in a little bit. Yeah, I'm speeding right to the point. Uh, when I looked at the ARPA guidelines, which I am for my own community, but the larger group is entitled, I saw the clients served by this project, it is a very high priority for underserved, high-risk population, which is definitely one of, one of the criteria here. I look at it as a regional problem because I know we don't have this level of services in the area. And having to relocate parties that are at risk like this out of the area, does, does no one service on, on this? Uh, next, I thought it was a great example for collaboration between the county and town. Shame on me for being a supporter of county, but I, but I am. So I've encouraged this group here to also look to the town for some support. Our ARPA funds are a bit more modest than yours are, but still, it is physically located in Farmington. And certainly a part of our population will be served, but so isn't the entire county. So I, I will be lobbying at, at my municipal level to try to add in a piece of the support for this and hoping that you'll see it as a, as a broader perspective and you can chime in and help to that.
So there's a change since you get a new town manager now? Because that wasn't the case when we met here. Because most of the towns that came, it was that they wanted to keep their own money and they wanted some of ours.
Well, our, our money and your money. I, I mean, it's, it's our, it's our citizen free. Yes, if you think that's a new vision, uh, I'm, I'm good with that too. Uh, we are, we are changing every day. This is a new source of money for, for, for both us to consider. I think this one smacks right into one of the high priorities for, for at-risk and underserved populations, much like homeless this is also, but that'll be a topic for another topic.
Elise.
Thank you.
So is the only town that's currently paying, that currently part of that is Farmington?
Um, for this project, yes, but it's, so we're getting funds through CDBG, um, which is through the state, the Community Development Block Grant. Um, that was specifically COVID-related. Uh, we're getting the money through HUD. Um, we're also receiving, we receive some funding for the environmental testing through ADCO.
No, but what I was wondering about is.
We do in our other counties. We do get town support every single year from the county. So we get, um, or from the, um, from, yes, from the town.
And Farmington as well?
Yes.
Okay, and this, this $10,000 is an extra 10 from what you guys are normally giving? Because you're talking about two things. This is a specific building, right?
Yep, correct.
What you, what you normally, the other stuff is like an ongoing.
Correct.
Agency.
Agency kind of thing. So my question was, um, would you consider asking a few other towns to pitch in a little bit? I mean, hypothetically, I'm just weighing something here from that. So let's say that we said, and this is just hypothetical, it's not a problem. That we said, oh, we give you 50, can you go get the other 25 from Wilton, Jay, blah, 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 blah?
Um, I, I, I'm not saying they couldn't do it, but I think that it's not in Wilton or Jay.
No, but they could serve those people, right?
Oh, a hundred, yes, a hundred percent, yes. And, and so I think that unless I knew that that was really going to be a pretty solid opportunity, um, I think it would, we have to, we have to know very soon. We are, we're, I was just at the site today. We are broken ground, we have walls being put up, we have to order things, and so, um.
But I mean, no offense, but you're, you're, you're breaking ground on the assumption of, of our 75, right?
Nope.
Oh, okay, well, no, okay, so then.
No, we broke ground on the promise of the funds through our, uh, main housing contract.
If this building hasn't been built yet?
It is, yep, it's been built. It's, we've owned it for, uh, we got it from Franklin Memorial Hospital, um, but it's being renovated.
Well, it's over by the hospital?
Say that again?
Is this over by the hospital?
No, it's, uh, well, kind of. It's right down the road across from the hospital. That road, that right behind the hospital.
133?
Yep.
So it's one of them offices out to the.
Forward.
Uh, probably the one on the right where Caldwell used to be. The other way? Oh, okay, so, how many families did you say this would hold at one?
So at any time, it could be four to eight people in the middle part of the building. And then on the end part, um, that will be apartments, it's for, you know, a, a person and their child can live there.
So you're only gonna be able to take in four families in this whole building?
Probably six, probably six at the same time.
And what is gonna be useful? This is, oh, everything else is offices and?
Nope, so can I show you on your drawing?
Sure.
Yep, okay. So this part, so the building itself is less than 4,000 square feet. So this isn't like a humongous complex. So this is one building, this is one bedroom apartment. This is one bedroom apartment. This is a bedroom, a bedroom, a bedroom, a bedroom, and office. We also have two ADA bathrooms, which are very large. These are both ADA bathrooms as well. And then this part of the building, this is also food pantry. Um, this part of the building is, um, conference room where we meet with law enforcement, have team meetings. Um, this whole front part of the building is going to be a program hub. So there will be two computer stations set up, and then, you know, diapers, food, all the things that people need. Um, and then staff office, staff office.
Okay. Now, you're saying the family of these apartments, right?
Correct.
How long do they stay in those apartments?
As long as they need to.
Really?
Yeah.
So if they have a fight and you take them in, and they, don't they have to go find a rent or anything like that? Uh, they can stay right there?
So these get leased out like an apartment lease? These part, and then they pay a portion of the rent. This part of the building is emergency. So someone calls us and they say, I have to get out of where I am, I am not safe here, I need to be in a confidential place. This place, they come in right away.
Okay.
24 hours a day. Usually we motel people the night before just so they have a quiet night's sleep and not come into some shelter in the building.
Stayed any length of time then?
No, they, oh, in the, in the shelter, absolutely.
Yeah.
I would say average length of stay is three to four months, but it could be a year.
Really?
Depending on how, what the sa, the situation is. Um, if they had resources when they can, came in or they didn't, um, how quickly they're able to hopefully feel safe again, not being in a, in a confidential location. So it could be a couple months, it could be two nights.
So, when you say confident, I mean, I'm not trying to be a pain, but when you say confidential location, I mean, it's the only one in Farmington County, right?
Right, okay, so I guess I should use secure facility better.
Yeah, there's no secrets in here. Um, I'll tell you what I'll do. I, I can't answer with these guys, but I'll commit to no less than 50, but I would like to see you try to go get 25 in the town.
Okay, and if we don't get the 25 from the towns, what do we do?
At, at a minimum, I'll give you 50. And I'll, and I, I'm open to seeing what happens if you do that. But you said if I, if you had an agreement, you can maybe go do it.
Yep.
And I just think that there's some other towns gonna be served by this. They have some of that ARPA money too, they could pitch in some as well.
Yep.
I'll, I'll follow behind Lance. The only difference is, uh, I'd like to see some numbers. How many people per town, where your, these people are coming from?
Do you want me to tell you right now?
No, I don't, because I don't want you to divulge too much of the information.
I know off the top of my head. So right now, at least, at least 25% of the people served are in Farmington. I know that.
In where?
In Farming, they're from Farmington.
Okay, all right.
But we serve hundreds of people every year from Franklin County.
I understand, but see, but I'm trying to follow with Lance.
Yeah.
Because that would make a difference. I think if it's 25% of them come from Farmington, Farmington ought to chip in 25 of the difference.
Well, I mean, it's just, it, well, it gives you a figure to go and, you know, and see what we got, I mean.
And when you say you're committed, is that, is that an amount where I can go tomorrow?
You will get 50,000 no matter what.
Okay, so I can go order heat pots tomorrow?
Yeah, whatever that, I, I, you make sure of these guys, I mean, no, no.
No, they're fine, quite fine.
But I followed you.
Okay, so I'm just, I'm only wanting, yeah, all right. But at minimum that, and then, you know, see what you can do with the other town.
Thank you.
They have, you know, they have, um, they've got ARPA money too. They're not asking, you know, a couple grand here and there, it adds up pretty quick.
And there are 21 towns in this county.
There you go.
You stopped and figured that 25%, you said, the town ought to give 25% and whatever.
Yeah.
They won't be charging them any taxes on that property probably.
It's a nonprofit, right?
Uh, we don't, no.
And a lot of the services from Farmington will be free. So they're giving it 25%. You know, they're giving their percentage in on this.
Yeah, but they also, like, they're also every year funding them some, and we're not doing that. So this is just for this one project, is what I'm looking at.
Wilton's been doing it.
Right, they're, right, we're not, they are, they're kinda taking care of the agency piece of that. This is just about that building, you know?
Yes.
They did?
Yeah. Yeah, they do. So they're getting it from the towns already, they have.
They're getting it from the towns already.
Uh, not all of the towns, and, and some.
21 towns.
And some of it is zero, and some of it is $50.
So you need to knock on 19 more doors, because I know.
Yeah, I, yeah.
That's all, that's why I wanted those numbers. I wanted to see who's benefiting from this.
I, I mean, I could give those numbers to you now, but I'm happy to.
No, there's 22 towns and you're gonna rattle them off?
Yeah, I haven't, I literally haven't.
Oh, you haven't run it down.
I know how many people we serve in every town in our three counties.
Just send me, send me an email or send it to Sue.
You wanna send me?
Send it to Sue.
But you never turn anybody down, right?
Nope, nope. Uh, meaning for services, no. But, uh, if our shelter is full, we do work with people on finding other safe housing locations. Um, but what I will say is statewide, we fulfill less than, I think we fulfill 30% of the requests that we get for emergency safe housing. That's how that comes.
Is there any reason you, I mean, that you can turn, you probably almost by law can't turn people?
We don't turn people away for services.
What if, what if they're, I mean?
Ever. It's, but we, we, we don't have enough beds, we don't.
Right, but what, is this ever an issue of the mental health issue and someone's violent or? I, I just wondered, I don't know.
Not really, no.
Yeah, it's usually the other guy.
But the law person sits up, he's usually nice and calm.
I think the jail owner take a lot of them because 50 bucks a day, that's a deal.
That's it, yeah. Is, is, has, has it been? Maybe you can't answer.
50 bucks.
Are some of the people that come in?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, yes. This is, I mean, this, this is an issue that affects, I guarantee you, if you talk to your group of male friends, they would either tell you that they have been in a home where they grew up, where that was happening.
Okay, oh, okay.
Or, or they've been in a relationship where someone used power and control against them. But men don't talk about it as much because there's a lot of shame and stigma that comes along with it of like, oh, you're such a big man, how could you ever let someone push you around or talk to you like that? It's not that easy.
So the sheriff is here, and I read in his report quite regularly that there are domestic violence issues where the perpetrator is a female.
Yeah, it's quite frequent.
Oh, yeah, I used to read it the same way.
And I don't know if this is what you see, but what we, what we are seeing and what we're hearing from our law enforcement friends is that sometimes with the call, someone makes a call and the female, when they show up on site, um, maybe was using violence in a, a situation that happened. But when we, but when there's further information, um, figured out that they realize that perhaps she was using violence that night in that situation. But over time, the, the partner, the other partner, is the person who's been using violence more often, has all of the control in their relationship, but she happened to have been the person that night who got arrested.
That happens.
Yeah.
I can remember a woman meeting her husband at the door with a butcher knife, started slicing on him. When I was an officer, there was no place to put him.
Yeah.
Um, just take him to jail, that's all. Take her.
I would like to comment, I think, uh, your presentation is very good, your facts, and all that has been exemplary.
This will help survivors of Franklin County for decades to come.
No, I just think if people that come and ask for money, you should have some answers.
Oh, thank you. But I will just say.
I'm not saying, I'm not trying to diminish that part, but my comment was specifically related to that.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to give it in on this, I appreciate it. You pushed a little hand with your ARPA application guidelines and the town is, so I'm learning as they go from you both.
Well, we think we have the best.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
One, one practical question, because maybe it's, it's for Sue. In other applications that, that come in, did I get a sense that you were going to expect the applicant to also solicit from every other town in order to get your award?
Depends on what it is.
Yeah.
And where it is and.
Some of it's just county stuff, some of it's all over the place.
How do I follow up? Because I real, I wanna be really candid. I don't know if we are going to be successful with the other towns. And so if, 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 whether if I, how would you like me to approach you?
I'll tell you exactly how I would like you to approach it. You go on Tom Savio's show.
I've been on his show, the Boat Ty Boy, it was great.
If I'm not mistaken, he is a selectman, is he not?
Yes, he is.
Yes.
Put him on the spot there, too.
Oh, my gosh, will you come on with me?
Sure, you name the day.
All I need is just go through Sue, because she's handling this.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. I appreciate your time, I will leave you to the rest of your meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye, bye.
So the next proposal that you have in front of him is a really one-page front back?
Yes.
And it is about, we talked a lot about these, I think it's the last meeting, but the new protective wear that the sheriff has asked for, it's a total for 16 items, 16 iPhone vests, I don't know if that's what they're called.
They're just plates that go inside our current vest that we have.
And it's 5902 is the proposal.
Yeah. This was an opportunity under the mental health guidelines. We've been talking about mental health quite a bit here lately. And since I took over as sheriff in 2013, our mental health crisis calls have gone up 400%. That's how much involved we are with these things, and these calls are very dangerous. Uh, our guys have come across a lot of different, uh, situations. And I just wanna give my people as much survivability as possible. Uh, these particular plates, now we have plates that stop rifle fire already. The problem is they weigh 12, 15 pounds, and it's just not practical to wear every day like they, like they have. They throw in the back of their cruisers. And quite frankly, if we go to a hot call somewhere where there's weapons involved, they never put them on because they just don't have time. Uh, with these particular plates, they're a pound and a half. I've had one, uh, one of my sergeants wearing one for the past three weeks now, and he doesn't even know it's there. And it provides rifle fire protection. So I just thought this was an opportunity, um, using these funds to provide a federal layer of protection for people that are out there on patrol, and that's why I brought it to you today. If you decide not to do it, I'm still gonna go and, and I'll just have to come out of county taxpayers. But it's that important to, to me to protect my guys, so.
So this is an upgrade, huh?
This is a, a new technology of many changes. And they provided that layer of protection with virtually no weight. And it fits right inside by our current, yeah, our current vest.
It's elliptically?
It's not even ceramic, it's, it's kind of a polymer.
Is it like that Chauvin armor that they use on those M1 tanks?
I don't know what it is, but they, they showed that they shoot with a 308 at 25 yards and it starts it.
Oh, good.
It's pretty incredible, yeah.
So that means that you're still wearing your vest?
Yep.
You just slip this in?
They just slip this in, they, they wear it on time. So, no matter what they're doing, they've always got this protection on them, so in case something happens.
So it's not attached to the, the vest that you have?
It is, the, in our current vest, there's a pocket inside for plates, but the plates that we have are so heavy that they don't wear them because they're just too heavy. This is a more practical item that they will wear every day, and they just put it in, forget about it, and it's always on them.
I know, we negotiated a couple of years ago, you wore a vest and you took it off, and I saw how heavy it was.
Yeah.
So I understand why they don't wanna wear them.
Yeah.
But what's gonna make them wear the vest? Is it just because you've got this other piece of material?
A lighter. So, so, so we are, by policy, everybody has to wear a vest when they're on duty.
You just said, they say don't.
So, so, but that vest is, that vest does not stop rifle rounds? That stop, that, that vest stops pistol rounds? The, the vest that he's referring to that you and I spoke about the other day?
Yeah.
Is those are heavy ceramic plates. Those are about ten pounds apiece.
Yeah.
Front and back. So those are not, they're thick, they're, they're unwieldy. You can't run with them on. So they're, 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 they are designed for entering a tactical situation that you know you're going to. So if you know you're going to deal with something, like the Sakeless Tac Team would have those, that they would have those that they would throw on if they were going to use one of them something. This plate slips inside the existing vest carriers that we have. So there's the vest panels that go inside the carrier. So the carrier is like the vest that you see. And then inside that vest, there's actually panels that go in there. And then this pan, this, this additional plate has a pocket that's already designed inside that vest that goes in and it holds that plate in the front of the chest. So that gives that, that rifle round protection in, in that area.
Because this is a safety issue, I, I support spending the five thousand going against what I already said. We'd hold it off until I.
Well, I already broke that promise.
So.
I already broke it earlier.
Oh, well, I'm gonna.
I was halfway there. You finish this off. All right. I know that we give them this. You're more likely to be shot with a rifle in Franklin County than a pistol, I was.
Yeah, I think so. Yeah.
Let's hope not. Jeez.
I know.
The way that things are going today, it's.
Yeah, we ought to.
No, it's been, you know.
We gotta give them. We gotta give them every chance they got out there.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
I know that we accept that one.
There's second of all. Okay, does secure on that?
You can't.
Is that the right figure?
Yes.
Fifty-nine oh-two.
Five thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars?
No, five thousand nine hundred and two.
Five thousand nine hundred and eighty-two.
Can you further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Sue.
So the next one is also the sheriff's department. And it's a collaborative between the sheriff's department and the town of Farmington because they use the sheriff facility for fueling. And this proposal just has a couple of estimates to it. It would have to go to bid, but it is a fueling system, software management or card management system. The one you have is very old, as I understand, and nobody really knows how many fuel cards are out there and.
Well, it's, it's actually done by keys. Right now, the, the system we're using right now, something we got from the town of Farmington 20 years ago. And it works. The problem is we have no idea who's got keys out there. And when they take fuel, the way it goes now, each department has their own keyhole that they use. They turn it on. And they're supposed to report the fuel themselves and enter it in. Chief Deputy Lowell at the end of the month goes, opens up the thing and tallies up the analog type systems and what's consumed or every two weeks he does it or?
Every once a month.
Once a month he does it. And then from there, we break it down and we send a, a, a bill estimate to Farmington because we pay the overall fuel costs. And then we send a, a, an invoice to Farmington for reimbursement for the amount of fuel that they use. Now, we're talking farming PD, we're talking parks and recreation, we're talking, uh,
Fire Department.
The, the fire department, we're talking their transportation people. They have several different departments that come there. Basically, everybody who works for Farmington comes and utilizes our pumps. And, and then, and of course, for us, it's just cruisers and the jail transport vehicles. The problem arises when we recently, last year, we had an issue where 300 gallons disappeared and we had no idea where it went to. And it came out of a certain department in Farmington and they denied it and we said, sorry, but that's where it came from, but.
If, if you don't mind me interrupting that, so if you say, so you guys are pretty good at tallying what you use, right?
Yes.
So when you automatically just send the bill to the rest of them, right? So, so it's, so this, so is that kind of?
It's broken down by their, I believe it's broken down with.
Right. So, so there's a key box. So there's a, there's a box, lift up the lid and there's, I don't know, twenty-eight or thirty different keys.
Lot of round keys.
So each, so each, each one of those person who has a key puts the key into the slot, the number, the number A, B, C, and then the number down.
These are keys.
That corresponds with, with the, with their, their slot that they're supposed to put that on. When you put that in there, it turns it on. When you pump fuel, there's a gauge or a, there's a dial inside there that records how many gallons is added under that key number.
Yeah.
So the, at the beginning and the ending of every month, the chief deputy goes in and says, okay, these are, these are the, the, the values that those have. And then at the beginning of the next month, he goes in and records those again and the difference is then the how many gallons those used by that, that key. The problem is like the sheriff said, is that we've had a couple times now where people have said, we did not use that much gas. Well, your key accessed.
This hole.
That hole and turned on and the meter turned that number of gallons. But the thing is, as the sheriff said again, this is a 20-year-old system that we got from Farmington. We don't know how many keys there were originally. There's never been any accountability for the keys other than, you know, the ones that we've had made for the patrol deputies, for the sheriff's department. Who has keys outside for Farmington PD or for Farmington, the town Farmington? We don't know.
I mean, somebody could come there in the dead of night and fill up. We wouldn't know.
Yeah, but they didn't. If they were filling up, they'd be charging it to somebody, right?
Well, it'd be coming out of someone's account, but like this one particular department, I, I won't rename which one it was, but 300 gallons were taken and it was unaccounted for.
Can you get a new key?
No. I mean, everybody's gotta have, everybody's gotta have specific keys for their specific.
It's not a digital system. It's not a digital.
It's not digital. So this way, if we look at this system here, people would come in, you know, who the person was. You know, the time and date they took it and the amount of gallons they took. It automatically downloaded to the, to a computer. That's easier for tracking. So we're talking security overall, trying to reduce the amount of theft, potential theft, all potential mismanagement.
That's 300 gallons times three bucks.
It's a lot of money.
So if, if it's a key card system, so can you track individual vehicles? So if you had like, you know, a deputy in the north part of the county that's using a lot more fuel and say someone, it would, it would track specific vehicles?
Right. So right, right now, if, everybody at the sheriff's office has one key slot that we use. Then we have sixteen keys. So there's sixteen of us that use that same, that same slot. So alls we know is how much the sheriff's department uses.
Oh, okay.
So same, so same for Farmington PD.
Where is that gonna be located?
Uh, it's outside of the jail.
Yeah, where it is now, right?
Right where it is, yes.
How big is your tank?
One more.
It's that big pumpkin thing out there. I don't know how, how many gallons it takes, but I know these days, compared to a year ago, every time I get a bill, it's five thousand dollars. So I'm thinking anything we can do to help reduce any type of potential mismanagement.
Is that why the town of Farmington gave it to you?
I have no, I wasn't around then, so I have no idea.
Now, one other question.
Let's do the back.
Will we be the only ones that use that or is it gonna be the town of Farmington?
The town of Farmington will still use it. It's not a problem. I mean, they, they pay the bills. It's fine, the way it works out. We just want to reduce any potential for mismanagement. That's all, you know, using fuel and not be, we, we want to have better accountability for the amount of fuel to be put out there.
So it's, it's a digital system. So just like you have, um, the, right now we have car, card door access for the sheriff's office and everybody has their own assigned card. So Jim can go in and look and see every time that Dave Rackliff has gone in and out of the building when the building was locked. So the same thing, you would have a digital access that's assigned to David Rackliff and every time David Rackliff filled up his vehicle, it's gonna record this amount of fuel for David Rackliff.
Okay.
The one time it gets fired, you can cut him out.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Is this town of Farmington the only town you're doing this with?
Yes.
So are you going to pass along some of this cost to the town of Farmington?
We tried that, uh, how long ago? Two, three years ago? Two years ago and it was a, this, no, we won't do that. Because it was the same system we were looking to do two years ago. And they didn't want to participate and.
Quarter a gallon.
Well, they say, you know, so much for gallon. It'll take care of that, wouldn't it?
I think thoughtful. I know. We're, we're trying to be fair here, you know.
But isn't there a connection between the school department buying gas and the town of Farmington buying gas and the sheriff's department? Isn't there something going on there?
Years ago, they used to co-mingle some of the bids for fuel and that has not happened in a long time.
And paper products.
And paper products. I bought a lot of paper for a long time.
Yeah, okay. I knew it used to be we had to get the gas at the jail from the school department. Because we could get it cheaper.
Most of the buses, D.
Well, if you don't record it, it's a lot cheaper.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're right.
So what you're looking at is one of, one of the, they got some estimates, which is great.
We've got two companies that do this. We reach out to them and they send us back estimates.
And one of them has 50 cards, key cards, and one of them has 100 key cards. They're two different proposals, but it's a 13,000 to 16,000 dollar project.
I would imagine the 16,000 is for the one with more cards.
Yes, it is.
Is it necessary with more cards?
I don't know. That's the thing. I don't know how many are out there. Yeah.
Yeah.
The, 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 the more expensive plan has a few more amenities attached to it, so where the cheaper actually wouldn't have to go out there and download information. It would automatically just soon, once a month or whatever talent time period would be, the pump would automatically feed that information to software on a server. And it would just pump in automatically and populate that way. The cheaper one, you'd have to do it manually, but hey, either one would be better than what we're dealing with today. And I'm sure even with the cheaper one, if we needed more cards, we could probably get them. Nah, I'm young. What's a card, right?
Yeah, yeah, makes sense.
I know with us, we would need eighteen.
Twenty.
Twenty cards for us.
With the jail.
With, oh, with the spare cards too. So in the jails, so twenty, twenty-two cards probably for us. And I don't know how many. Farmington has as many cruisers as we do, if not more. And the town department and all that other stuff, so it'd be a lot of different. We may be able to get away with 50.
Yeah.
I doubt it, but you might.
I don't know. There's just so many keys out there. We have no idea where they're at.
I know it. I know. You'll find out when you shut it off.
As long as the system will manage more cards than 50. The cards are about four dollars apiece.
Yeah. I, I, I haven't asked that question. I assume it would.
So four dollars apiece for, for the life of the cad or?
Well, yeah, cards do wear out too, believe it or not, because they're, yeah.
But I mean, you, you say the cad went two years. Be four dollars for two years.
It's four dollars for the, to buy the template. For all of these digital systems. It's about four dollars. They're electronic. Lance is right. They're just like his keys that open the, the school doors.
Yeah, yeah.
Exactly the same kind of key.
Yeah.
And it records who went in and yours is gonna record who's gonna pump gas, so.
At what time and who did it?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah.
I, I'd go for 16,250 dollars. That's a hundred keys. What do you say?
I think we can buy 40 keys for 1600. Well, I mean, you already kind of broke a rule twice and you kind of just. You got a couple more coming here. And I, 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 in principle, I think it's a good idea. It's just one of those, I want to add all this up.
We wait, we'll wait till we have.
All right. I think this is the last.
It looks, it looks to me like Farmington is the one that has to keep paying for lost gas, so maybe that's a reason to get them involved a little bit.
You got your key card.
No, I mean, I, I, I'm not against it. I just.
Yeah, we, we, we did bring this up with the, uh, with the, with the town manager, the previous town manager. And they were interested in that. I would like to have your.
Well, we stopped getting shot today, so we'll hold off.
Well, they would, they would interest you, you say?
No.
I'd like to have your final.
So we could go with the guys, if you can, if you can add on to them after you find out if we.
Looking for, you're looking at the cheaper plan if we did it. Yeah, I'm sure we could.
It's gonna have to go to bed anyway.
Yeah.
I do, I think Sue probably look and you would look into that. You have to keep the difference in. And tell us what it is.
So, and, and I think it would be worth a conversation with the town manager of Farmington. Christian?
Yeah, I mean, this guy's a. And they've got some of these ARPA funds too, so if they'll cover ours, they'll cover theirs.
So we have credit cards for wax.
They would, you'd think they'd be the ones that won't do it most because they're missing those.
Monkeys, the loan tracks, if you have concern.
With our beverage, beverage change.
You ready for the next one?
I'm ready for the next.
All right. Charlie?
Is it the most gas station?
You guys can sit around while.
It's more expensive.
I could suffer with one walk a day.
How, how's the wife doing?
We try to do.
She's busier than I am.
Do you like it?
When I saw that, my God.
Yeah.
What a hornishness.
Yeah, she got into hornishness, but she's gonna prevail in the end.
Oh, yeah, she will. Yeah. How's your health? You doing okay?
I'm still here. A year later, I'm still kicking.
Did she stay over there or go back?
She'll turn back and forth.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
All right. So next we have Charlie with work. You guys know Charlie. Um, Charlie has put in two proposals. I think you could probably talk about them in whatever order you want to. But just let them know which one you're talking about.
All right. I'm gonna be talking about the multi-town project that's been on the, in play for, I'd say, three years, two and a half years. And the project is Weld and Wilton, broadband project, fiber to the premise. Including the townships of Perkins and Washington. So in 2017, we applied for a planning grant to compete for a state applicant, state grant. The county commissioners, you folks, agreed to, to match that and challenged, much like what Lance just did with the state voices, to contribute X if we could raise X from the towns. So we went around, hit all the towns. Twenty-one towns plus the town of Litmore Falls. That's 22 towns. Each town contributed to the plan. And the county contributed and the state contributed. So the match, the multiplier effect, shared investment for greater outcome. So out of that plan, we have the Rangeley project that's going on. And the project that is in front of you is the Weld-Wilton project. So it's fiber to the premise to the town of Weld and a portion of Wilton. And that includes Perkins and Washington. Six and a half million dollar job. And I am asking the commissioners to contribute for the UT portion, which is Perkins and Washington. They connect, physically connect. The fiber's gonna run right down there. And that is 4% of the project total. 4%. So talk about a multiplier. That is a, a pretty ideal multiplier.
How many people live in Perkins and Washington?
Not many. It's 36. So, but that's, the goal is to connect to the Weld population.
But, um, can we use some of the TIF money for this?
Yes. You could certainly do that.
But the TIF money was specifically, I have to go probably to the township, right?
The UT.
The UT, so.
Yeah, we go, and that's, I'm applying for the UT portion of this.
Okay.
But, or not but, but the ARPA guidelines, broadband is.
So if I, if I look at the proposals, one of them, this is more administrative stuff?
That is more administrative.
And this is the direct.
That is installation.
Okay.
That is installation. And we are applying to the state for support for that installation project on March 20th.
Yeah. And some of this, I remember when I was talking to you, we had, you were saying that we can get this reimbursement?
Well, no. What we've, what we've done is if the state, um, it's gonna be better than that. If the state contributes, that is going to drive down the subscription rate for all of our residents in this project. And so it is gonna push down the cost. And a big issue, and a, a, definitely a concerning issue is everyone says, well, what's it gonna cost me? And this would push it down to a very competitive level.
Do you know what the hookup rate is?
It's a hundred dollars.
And that's the hookup rate?
That's the, that's the monthly subscription.
And what, and what would that push that down to?
It could push it down to 60 for a monthly fee. And it, and it could very well, there's a subscription rate, the hookup rate of $400. It could eliminate that, depending on how successful we are with the state. So I, I don't want, I didn't want to put that in there with hard numbers because we, it depends on how, how the state participates, but in order for the state to participate with any of these broadband projects, they need to see evidence that the towns and the county are willing to invest in their own projects. And so Wilton and Weld have, you know, it, had town warrants and votes to invest up to certain amounts of money for a broadband solution. With county, with you folks agreeing to this, that will be the checking that box showing the county is behind the UT portion of this project. And then we'll have a very strong show of support in our state application.
This, this, uh, this project goes all the way around from Weld to Carthage and then to Dixfield, right?
No, it doesn't. Um, Carthage chose not, elected not to participate. I think if we did another vote, they would want to participate. It's a missed opportunity for them.
But that's something you could go from Weld down to Dixfield up, right?
Yes, we could. And it probably, would probably be Dixfield up.
My question was going to be, because I thought it was gonna connect with Dixfield. I didn't know if Carthage withdrew that and it could stop your project from continuing, but by, were you going to receive monies from the town of Dixfield for this project?
No, Dixfield was, was never in the project. It was Carthage and Temple. No, Dixfield was never in the project. It was Carthage and Temple.
So what was the point in going all the way down to Dixfield?
Well, it was going to Carthage. Sorry.
But Carthage and Dixfield are a long ways apart?
No, they're borders. They're borders.
But they were a long way apart from this town. If you travel, you can see this, many miles.
Oh, I see. We were talking about people in between.
Yeah. In other words, I see this project as very, very expensive for such a few people. And I know, Bob, I've heard him before. Go ahead, Bob.
One of the things we've seen happen this year in Franklin County, especially northern Franklin County, is an explosion of people moving to the area. Kingfield, Carabassett, hundreds of families just last year. And those aren't seasonal. Those are permanent, year-round people. One thing that they ask for, if you talk to any real estate broker, because these people are relocating here and they're usually home-based businesses, working from home, working remotely like we all have as a result of COVID, is internet, internet, internet. I mean, I talk to people all the time and they'll say, oh, you know, I have, I'm trying to get HughesNet or I'm trying to get this. And it's really pretty marginal. It's a, it's an investment in, you might say, Terry, you know, it's just a few people. Those few people, I mean, a piece of land comes up for sale in the UT right now, it's gone. A piece of property came up on my road last week. I would not have looked at it. I already had an offer on it. That was a day later. So real estate is hot. People are coming to the area. It's an investment in the county for new families that want to be here. And I just can't say nothing. We've been working on broadband for, heard me talk about it, you know, four, five years. And we get to this point now, we have the ARPA money and it's dollars, you know, we spend a dollar, we get 10. You know, the multiplier effect that Charlie keeps talking about is so we're taking that, some of that money and we're, you know, if it's 5.8 million, maybe it's 10.8 million or 15.8 million, you know, it's drawing more money in. And I think that's just, you know, I'll take those odds any day in the stock market. I'll bet one.
One of the things that, you might be able to answer this, Sue, not as one of these, but as a former or current superintendent. The Supreme Court case that deals, it's in front of the Supreme Court that deals with Maine and deals with not, remote students in us, and students that are, I think it's in organized territories, right? Or they're not within a certain distance. If that would, if it's not, it's my understanding that if that is ruled upon, right, in favor of the, I guess it would be plaintiff in this case, that you would, these people would have the ability, in essence, have a voucher system or some sort, right?
Sure.
So, and one of the things you could do with a voucher system, and this is where my question goes to you, is if you can find an accredited online type educational system, that would then be available to spend that voucher on, right? So I thought, OK. And that's potentially 5, 6,000 kids right now, I think.
Yeah, well, and Maine has some of them. I mean, we have some.
No, this is all Maine.
I know, but we have some real dead spots in Franklin County.
And so you could participate in that voucher system if you don't have.
Well, you could, but you would limit your online option.
Ah, yeah.
No, fundamentally, the case is.
If you can't, if you can't get online, you don't have an option.
Right, no, right, absolutely. And that, educational choice, you know, I have, just, from what I'm seeing, I think this is something that really is, we're unaccustomed to.
But that is, it might have, that could be an outcome or be affected by having internet, but that is not the proposal in front of you.
Well, the proposal in front of you is for broadband.
Yes, yep.
Right. What broadband opens up is a different issue.
Yes.
And I'll get that.
When I see the effort start so that I can go from here to Coben Door and get phone reception, I'll be OK then. Yeah, but nobody's done that. They're all talking about computers and we can exist without computers. I mean, I do quite well. And the fact that I'm upset about is the fact that I've been to all these meetings about broadband since they started. And in Wilton, they want to spend all this money. And I asked the question, I live on Walker Hill in Wilton, am I going to be able to get broadband? And the person that we was there in Wilton said, no. So this is ridiculous to spend a lot of money. And my point, for such few people, we could get better bang for the buck if we put a tower up in Weld.
Terry, in order to put a tower up, you have to have the infrastructure. And what is the infrastructure?
Broadband.
Broadband. You've got to have broadband to these areas. You have to have fiber to this tower that sits way up in the county to get the data.
There's an historic example that's somewhat with rural.
It's what has to be done. You have to have the infrastructure. You don't have the infrastructure.
But what's wrong with satellites? They're up there. But you use them.
It's a long way off. I mean, but it's.
It just doesn't make sense to me, people. I just can't buy it. And it's not more important than water and sewer. I'll never forget that.
No, but Terry, as you, as you drive down the road, you see these tower poles and you've got power on the top and you get the telephone. And the next thing is the fiber. And it doesn't matter whether you like it or don't like it, people are demanding it. And people that are coming to the area are demanding it because you can get by without it. But a guy that just moved here from God knows where, who's trading on the stock market or works for a Fortune 500 company, that's willing to come in and spend a half a million, three quarters of a million dollars on a house. And, you know, is that good for the county? Look at the real estate values through the roof. It's a huge investment in Franklin County at the bottom line where things can grow. And that's, that's it.
Let those people put it in.
Well, but.
About 90%, if I remember correctly on my figures, at the time of Roosevelt's, Franklin Roosevelt's election, of rural America was not, did not have electricity. And the problem is obviously the economies of scale, right? The towns were easy to get to because you had a lot of, you know, people and you could divide it up well. But it was always a problem when you moved into rural areas. You know, how do we do this? Because the economics change. And, you know, I mean, Roosevelt, I mean, you know, whatever you think of him, historical or whatever, but I mean, the TVA project was pretty successful for electrification of the suburbs.
The, you look at the, you know, the TIF funds, we have money in the TIF that's designed for the UT to help broadband. And, you know, we need to, you know, if we don't use ARPA funds, we should use TIF funds or we should use the two together to magnify any of this because the UT is developed, I mean, like I said, there's more and more people moving all the time. And you look at Freeman, you look at Salem, I mean, people buying up property left and right.
And why are they doing that, Bob?
What's that?
Why are they doing that?
COVID. They're all trying to get out of the city.
That's part of the problem. The real prux of the matter is a cheap land compared to.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah.
So that's a problem for us.
And the land value would go up if there was connectivity. Land values would go up, your property tax base would go up, our denser.
And you press, you do it to Charlie, you force the mainer out.
No, you don't. You add value to the mainer's assets.
Well, I mean, you know, progress is progress, but how you look at it and, you know, progress is going to happen. And the more we can do to benefit Franklin County, I think it's huge. And I think Franklin County is right on the cusp. Great things can happen. I mean, this, this, there's a, I don't know if this is public knowledge, but there's a huge project going on up in Stratton Ustis right now, next to the biomass, that is off the freaking charts. And it's all about technology. It's huge, huge technology. And when I first heard about it, it just blew me away, but people are willing to invest. And that's, and here's Stratton, right up in the middle of nowhere, you say, not many people, but someone's going to invest a lot of money into a huge technology project, so.
Well, there's something Rangeley, Rangeley's experienced a big boom over the last two years. I heard the number, 50 families have moved into Rangeley.
Even the school population.
Yeah. And so, you know, people are going to the really, I mean, I consider Rangeley pretty remote from, from anywhere, really. And in Stratton, obviously.
Stratton Ustis.
Some of them are already owned places there. They just moved.
Yeah, so, yeah, but I was up here the other day and it's growing, like, there's lots of construction going on.
But I do think that you're going to see, when this is over, right, that the workforce is going to be fundamentally transformed. Because there are companies that are going to say, why in the world am I going to have this big office building? You know, we haven't had it for two years. If these people can work at home, then, you know, why not? They've been doing it.
That's already happened.
And it's happening.
It's already happened.
And the question is, are you going to allow potentially areas like the UT to have that option as well?
I have a client in Kingfield that's an aerospace engineer. And she works from her home. She travels once a month. And her husband is a, another type of engineer, I don't know, you know, way above my pay grade. And they work exclusively from home. And the reason they bought what they did renovation in Kingfield was because that fiber right there was so, you know, they're protecting them right downtown. They got good speed, essential. But those are, those are, you know, young, they're going to have families. If they have a family, they're going to continue to live here and prosper and be part of the community. That's what, that's what it's all about in Franklin County.
But I should point out, that's, they specifically bought a property that was, that had cable.
Yeah.
But take a look at downtown Franklin, downtown Wilton. That fiber optic has been there for years and you both know it. And it's done nothing.
It's not.
We wanted to gather information and I.
Yeah, it's not available to everybody. You have to be willing to pay as a provider.
OK, I'm on that.
Do you want to talk about the next, the planning project?
Sure, sure. So the planning project, so I mentioned the two projects we have in play. This is ready to roll, ready to go with your approval. It will strengthen our application on March 20th. The second proposal is, we have been awarded $40,000 from the state of Maine for planning. And I'm asking you to match that with $20,000. Our office is putting in $20,000 of in-kind, which is just ongoing our efforts. But what this does is it allows us to keep our consultants engaged so we can now design the next project to go to, whether it's Chesterfield, New Sharon Industry, or the Route 114.
John?
Yeah, Avon, Strong, Madrid, Salem, and Freeman Township. That is designed as well. And so we want to focus on either of those projects to see which communities wish to participate. And as I mentioned, there's, we've all heard about the millions of federal dollars that are out there coming to the state. Those dollars are only going to come to the state or to the towns that show they have a plan and show they're willing to share in their own solution, share in their own investment, as we have seen with Wilton and Weld. So I'm asking for that support to allow us to keep our momentum going on these projects, designing new projects while these older projects get going on their own.
Do you want a motion on that?
I would like that because we've got work to do.
Yeah.
I guess I'll make a motion.
Oh, yeah, keep going. One more waiting. We've already, the county, the taxpayers have already given you $120,000 this year for an investment. And what do we have to show for that?
OK, well, we've got those two projects I mentioned. So the Rangeley project, $7 million. This is $6.5. There's $13.5 million of investment coming to your community, your county, that would not be coming otherwise. So that's $120,000 for $13.5 million. Is that a good return? You have to ask yourself that. Is that a good return? Is that an investment I should make again?
I don't know what you mean by that because what have you done with the $120,000? Did you give it to somebody to plan this?
No, we have been working, putting our own effort into this. It allows us to get out and negotiate, deal with all of our towns, engage them, inform them about the opportunities. And in our ARPA funding, we are engaging the communities. I encourage you to reach out to the town this summer and host two meetings for town engagement. Hear from the towns. As commissioners, it's an opportunity to work with the towns. The towns are your constituents. They fund your budget, right?
Yeah.
So.
We tried that already with the ARPA fund.
Well, we've got some information.
Yeah, you've got some information, but those are gestures or efforts that will, will build rapport with your towns. And you can find mutually, prioritize and bring some projects to the top and share in the investment. And so, yeah, we facilitate with that too.
Yeah, we were there, as you were. OK.
So the only other thing that I want to share with you tonight, thank you, Charlie, by the way, is that I did send a letter to all other municipalities in Franklin County. And I've heard back from some of them and to let them know that you had purchased on behalf of them the ortho imaging for the county and gave them the information on how to buy up if they choose to. And some of them are.
Yeah.
It really depends on their need, but I've had some really good conversations and they were very pleased that the county supported that. So I just wanted to pass that on to you.
Good. Thank you.
That's a wonderful example of working on behalf. Yeah, no, Bob, sorry.
Again, Terry, I thank you for that. And I've already heard from some of the state organizations, some of the towns, some of the forestry companies, it's a huge investment of the county and they really appreciate money well spent. The other thing I wanted to talk about real quick, Lance, you talked about it earlier, is looking at something like a regional county thing over by the jail. I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, like a county offices. And I think, I think it's a great idea. I think it's a huge, you know, step forward. Something I would ask, and I know Sue was funneling all this stuff, is if you start to explore that, form a committee and get some other, like towns.
Well, we kind of, Jim was here, right? There's been a, I mean, there's no committee yet. There's been some people start to show some interest. So that's something maybe we ought to look into.
No, and I think it's, I think there's a lot of, and it all ties into, you know, when you start to tie up the set system thinking, you know, boy, back up, back up, because, you know, if you had a regional or a county facility that housed everything, you know, then you could do it all at once. The county owns the land. It makes a lot of sense because I don't know what the maintenance and the heating costs of this building is, but it's not going to get easier and you're not, you can't expand it anymore. And I think as time goes on, you're going to need to stay, so.
Here's a question for you. If it came to that broadband, what do you want?
Broadband. Because, because I'll tell you what.
It's a joke.
No, broadband, broadband serves the whole county.
I know, I got you. I just, I just.
We're a lot on our place all.
No, it doesn't. It can't serve the whole county.
That's a, that's a misstatement, I think, in my belief, because they told me that I couldn't get it personally, so I'm proof.
They're not, they're not going to.
I think you're going to go back.
You said you have what you need, which is good, so they don't need to serve you, right? You've got it. So they're not going to overbuild. They're not going to.
That's not true, Charlie.
That is true, actually, because if you have B-lines.
I do not have B-line.
Well, then you're going to get served.
No.
Yes.
You told me point blank at that meeting. So how can I dispute that? I mean, we have meetings to find out information.
What meeting was it? What was that?
It was in Wilton, in '17 or '18.
Lots changed since then.
Lots changed since then.
I mean, that's, that's old information.
Yeah. No, to get B-lines is going to cost me like $1,400.
Really?
I'm not going to pay that, so.
Yeah.
Maybe I could get it out of the ARPA funds. Help out the people in the town. I don't know. OK.
Which is coming initially?
There's a map in the town office showing where the, where the fiber will go.
Can I just ask one quick question? Do you want this on the next agenda, these items, or do you want to wait for a month?
Let's wait until we get.
What's that, what's your time for?
I would like you to consider the planning funds.
You want the planning funds before the, before the fund?
Yeah, my, our application goes into the state March 20th. So I need you folks to show a vote of confidence that you're willing to invest in your own project. And that's going to help us out.
If we invested the $240, aren't we investing our own project?
Yes, you are. That's it. That's, 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 that's the power.
Yeah, what I'm saying, of the two, you implied you wanted the 40 for the $100,000 for.
No, there's a, there's a request for $240 and then there's a request for 40.
Right, but it's part of the 100, right?
The request for 40 is part of.
Yeah, which one do you want first?
The 40 allows us to keep going, moving forward. The $240 will be early March, the end of this month.
So you need the $240 first.
I need to vote on it. I don't need the hard, I don't need a check. I just need you to vote that you're willing to make that investment.
But one is to apply for additional funds. I just want to be clear. The 40 is for you to apply for additional funds.
Matching funds.
I've already, I've already matched them.
You already matched them.
So now I'm asking you to match those to allow us to move forward.
I just want to be clear on.
Yes. $240 is allow us to apply for the state's match of investments in this project.
That, so they made a motion for. And it hasn't checked.
So I guess we ought to meet, the next meeting, we ought to bring at least that one up again and then probably the other one. I have a few questions I'm going to look into in the next couple of weeks. And then, because that's time sensitive.
Yes.
I don't think the garden club is, we've got some time on that one. We have Scott looking into the thing. The other one involves getting back from Mike about the sewer system there.
Yeah, that could be an interesting one.
Yeah, well, one, I mean, I like the idea of that whole building thing, but man, that's, that figure is going to rock us all.
I was on the board when we brought this new buildings up to take the place of this place. People were going to help you, they were going to do this, they were going to do that. there were, people were going to help you, or they were going to do this, they were going to do that. But you know they want rocks big enough for them to hide enough when it comes to the real goal. So where are we today, in the same old building? Doing the same old heat, but it's now it's a historical building, so. It's terrible, I don't care, it's getting me. But it.
Yeah, $100,000?
We funded a study.
Yeah, it was cost a lot of money for that study. And they're common, the street right over here, common, like, where they wanted that building, and they hit the fabric and shoe. It all fell through, because they want, like I say, now, rocks big enough for people to hide enough.
I went to the town.
Well, it wasn't pocket enough deep enough when they get the bill. You blame it to.
Everybody wants to go out for dinner, but when the bill gets handed, somebody can go up the bathroom, there you go.
You can blame it to anybody you want to, but we worked hard on that, trying to get that through. Very hard. And you're running out of land up there, where the jail, I can tell you. It's just that much you can use up there, and it's, it's getting scarce.
All right, we all set on broadband? So we'll move to old business.
We all set?
Tiffany has a report, right?
Oh, old business.
Yeah, I was waiting for him to say what the old business was. Everybody knew what the topic.
Follow-up on Lieutenant Ratcliffe's request for a study.
So you remember the last meeting, he had come forth and wanted to do a study based on the few administrative, um, employees that weren't allowed to initially join Maine Cars?
Yes.
I reached out to the Indian Oil, and turns out we made that right in 2016. They discovered that those three individuals weren't on there, and they build the county, and they build the individuals, and they're, um.
They're on it.
Retrod back to the, the January 1st of 2014, so that's all been solved. And I told Ratcliffe already, so he was aware, so.
Good, yeah.
Yep, so that one's taken care of.
I got a call on the miscellaneous for, you remember a few months ago, we gave a compressor from the jail to the town of New Sharon?
Yep.
Well, it turns out that the whole town of New Sharon doesn't have any three-phase power, so it's useless. So what do we want to do with the compressor?
Where's the string, Billy?
Tell them, tell New Sharon that they can find a home for it, or do we want to take it back?
They have it, they have it.
Not possession, nine tenths of the law. Tell them to shop around for some free phase power.
I know they can buy a converter, but I think the converter is more money than the compressor.
The free generator, the free compressor also got it better.
Somebody did do the homework, apparently.
Uh, okay. I'd say that, too.
We got a free face.
So we, I, we need a motion, because that was.
I move that we let New Sharon keep it. Let them take care of it, second motion.
Any further discussion on that motion? All in favor of that motion?
I have miscellaneous.
And you can handle that, Tiffany, if you would, either call Travis, Paul.
Travis?
Travis is the one that contacted me.
And just let him know he can keep it, deliver it, whatever?
Yeah, it's his responsibility, or theirs, it's not his. And it wasn't him that did not do the homework.
Okay.
All right, any other miscellaneous?
Yes.
Oh, gee, I was trying to get, bye, Tiffany.
So, as we all know, Vicki is going to go on her trip, um, and she's going to be changing from full-time employee. Pam and Vicki both thought that it was appropriate that we do a motion that she's going to be, continue working for the county under a part-time basis, and the salary is going to remain the same. So, we just really wanted to go through the motion of putting that in the record, so.
I move that we do that. I move that we allow Vicki to keep her part-time same salary. As we agreed to, until we get our own president to speak, right?
Yeah.
How are you feeling, Diane? Starting to feel confident? You starting to feel confident?
Yes.
Good.
All right, um.
So we have a.
Well, sorry, last made a motion that we keep Vicki as a part-time employee.
At the rate.
Yeah, second motion on that, but we're going to be in private for a week.
We need to deal with one first, Diane. Any further discussion on that motion? All those in favor of that motion, so signify.
Okay.
So, all right.
The other thing was a follow-up about the bus stop situation.
Is that from you?
Literally, yes. So Sue gracefully helped me out, because she knows everyone. She had a conversation with Scott Lay, he's the transportation director at SAD 58. Um, he's working on some remedies, and he's, he's going to reach out to the DOT about signage in the area indicating a bus stop. Um, and he's also working to see if there's some alternative routing that the bus can do. He didn't have any idea about the situation, but now he's aware of it, so he's going to work as fast as he can to remedy it, so that it's safe for the children and safe for the bus driver. And Sue also spoke to the UT superintendent. Um, he hadn't heard of the problem either, but he said, you know, we have any questions or further needs beyond SAD 58, that, you know, we reach out to him, so. Is that?
Yeah.
Good summary?
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right.
Scott was not aware that it had come to the county commissioners.
Okay, because I was going to say, he was there the other day, he had Betty drive me up.
Yeah, so he was not aware of that it came here.
Oh, he knew.
And so, he, he is working diligently on it, he, I mean, he really is a good guy.
Yeah, I know, he's a good guy.
He's really reaching out, and DOT right now, I don't think there's anything the county commissioners can do, but they're struggling with their timeline on getting signage when they need it, and you can't put signs up on major routes unless you have DOT's permission, so. He, he had already submitted for signage, so.
Okay. Well, thanks for looking at this.
Yeah.
Yes, I appreciate Sue's help on that, she's like.
That was when you were like wearing two hats.
Yeah, I said, so I'm doing this for a friend. She's like, I'm going to do it undercover, and then you can report back. I'm like, well, I don't want to take all the credit for the work.
That would happen with me.
That's it, I don't want any more miscellaneous.
I move that we adjourn.
Wait, whoa, 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 don't you doing break, yeah. I would like to take a moment and have a silent prayer for our past chief deputy, Raymond Milder, who passed away with COVID-19. And if you would bow your heads, please. May God rest in peace. Thank you.
Yep. All right, anything else?
I move with you. Second motion.
All those in favor? We're done.